Compliment, Murphy.
Oh yeah.
Third quarter.
Is Paul home for the work today?
He's gone. He was on the phone with me. He's not back. He's not on the phone. He's not. I've got some work. Your first name?
Don't play that, Compliment. He knows your number.
Uh, okay. I saw your friend. What's your name? Uh, yeah. Yeah, we talked about the doing part. Um, one about the month. Yeah.
Don't play that, Compliment. He knows your number.
I have it. You all, you're like, hey. You're like, oh, they're on. Yeah. Oh, yeah. 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 No. Woo. Yeah.
I think we all need to sit down and ask you guys questions.
Yeah. Uh. You want me to go in the back?
Yeah. Exactly.
This one?
I'm bad at this, man.
This one?
You ready to eat that, Compliment? Here. All right. Oh. Thank you for the fact, though. You play that. You want to eat? Do the serious death. Here's the bottle of food. You there. He's gonna fill this black guy forever. Big play, table. Where you been up for the period, John? Ah! I think he's gonna back them up on that. Take that. How about that? You would kill. We represent us. The people. Y'all wanna put us in the grave for what we put it to? Y'all got another thing coming. I lost it.
Made that way all over.
I know. All right, you want to vacation somewhere?
Made that way all over. I know.
Amen. Listen, God. The dead of the dead. Amen. And then. You're a fool. You're a liar. You're never going to do that kind of thing. Oh, amen. And all that dead of the dead. Here. Oh, daddy. He had rest. I like that. I like. He's dead. Fifty miles. It's that time here. For the state. Everybody's trying to end it. Everything is nice just here. Oh. Okay. You look for me. Tell. You can't do that. That's not how it works. What did I tell you about? About the other one? What you do about your own? Oh, you get it. You get it, right? Oh, what's that? Where the hell was that? Come on. Okay. What are you doing? I don't know what I'm doing. Okay, oh, yeah. I'm trying to fix things, man. What you do about your own? Okay. Oh, what's that? Come on. What are you doing? I don't know what I'm doing. Okay, oh, yeah. I'm trying to fix things, man. Oh, wait. Have you brought this to me?
No.
What happened?
I'm coming here.
Well, I thought something I don't hear. It's a matter of life. I thought the little girl held her. Had to have it back in the bag. You got it in the wallet, fucker. Well. Thank you for making the first appearance of this town. Don't get quiet now, this boy. Let's go teach this. Who will come out of the ring? I don't know. Go to the mall. Don't know. Have a good week.
Absolutely, girl, held her.
Again. You got it. You got it in the wallet, fucker. Well. Make clean. For making the first appearance of this room, man. Don't get quiet. Don't teach it. Who will come out of the ring? I don't know. Go to the mall. Don't know. Have a good week. Again. You got it. Make clean. I'm going to teach you. Let's go teach it. Just be careful, said me. You want to do the water. Thank you. You want water off. See how it's going down. I feel pretty safe here. All right. It's a water job. Can you see it? You're not gonna get water for it. Oh, my. There you go. Right. What am I doing? What am I doing? Hey. Look at this. This is what I'm asking you. You can't be a good of this. Oh. You get the water. You didn't even get that paper.
All right. It is 5:39 on Monday, December 5th. I hereby call this special meeting of the Flint City Council to order. Rule call, please, Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Mays is not here. Ms. Lewis? Mr. Murphy?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Present.
Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Herkenroeder?
Present.
Mr. Viper is not here. Ms. Worthing?
Present.
You have seven present.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, six present.
There are six present. That brings us down to the reading of the Disorderly Person City Code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code, Section 31-10 Disorderly Conduct, Assault and Battery, and Disorderly Persons, and will be subject to arrest for misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one more, one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest and violators shall be removed from the meeting. That brings us down to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Murphy, do you care to lead us in the pledge?
To the Pledge of the United States of America, and to the Father, for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Lewis, do you care to lead us in the blessing?
Absolutely. All hearts and mind clear. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come here one more time to gather in your name and your presence so we can move the illustrious city of Flint forward. We pray that you will be with us as we make decisions that would definitely change the trajectory of this beloved city. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you. That brings us down to the purpose of today's, tonight's meeting, which is in regards to the interviews for the city clerk. I will just read for the record and for understanding that per Resolution 220479.1, the council has authorized an interview process for hiring of our Flint city clerk. As a reminder, for the interview process itself, each council member will have five minutes inclusive of the candidate responses to ask the candidate questions. After all council members have had an opportunity to ask questions, each council member will have an additional two minutes, again, inclusive of candidate responses, in, in which to ask follow-up questions. The order of questioning will be determined by random draw in each round, except for the council president, who shall go last. I have everybody's ward number written on a Post-it note and inserted into this cup. We shall do a random drawing for that. Mr. Mays, I'll go ahead and put your, your ward number in here as well, and then we should get started. Following the interviews, we will go into public comment and public speaking. As a reminder, if you have not filled out a public comment form and would like to comment, the slips are in the back. There may be a brief recess as we are doing a little bit of double duty up here so we can give our clerk a little bit of a break. So there may be a little bit of a recess between the interviews and then the public speaking. With that being said, we'll go ahead.
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Madam Chair. In our council rules, whenever we have a meeting, one of the things that's not on the agenda is any agenda changes. I don't have any, but we've got to follow the rules and the format of all meetings.
Okay, thank you. Our first person to ask our interviewee questions is the council member from the sixth ward.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I do not have any questions for our, for Ms. Devine, our interim clerk.
Okay.
Thank you.
So our second council person is the council member from the fifth ward, Ms. Jerry Winfrey Carter.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I mean, I'm not going to say I don't have any questions. Um, I think I'll just select a question here. Let me see. Ms. Donahue, can you tell me about a time when you successfully communicated official information to the public?
Okay. I think when it comes to the clerk responsibilities, the most efficient and effective way that, that we, that we've utilized has been press releases. We try to, especially with elections, because there's a lot of deadlines. So the press release, we still have newspapers and reporters that will comment on them. We post them to the websites. Right now, I feel like the website is another good place, but because it's manipulated by a lot of different people right now, I like to know where things are and they stay where, where we put them. So as long as, like, right now, we have an elections page. So I've utilized that this past election. But I don't know that residents always know where to look. So probably the most effective resource that we use is a press release.
Okay. Now, do you use the press releases when you're looking for individuals to work the polls?
No, not.
How do you go about getting individuals in to work the polls?
Usually, it's a volunteer thing because election inspectors, we pretty much vet them just by, I, I call them volunteers, but they're not. They're paid, but they have no obligation to the city. They do it because they want to. So a lot of people just volunteer. We recruit them. Usually, it's somebody that you know or that has worked before or, so election inspectors come from a lot of different resources. We have referrals from the state. We have referrals from Republican and Democratic parties, major parties. We have people that just stop by and mention it. So we get election inspectors from all different places.
Yeah, and I just asked that question because you pointed out that you may use press releases, and I've always wondered, how did you guys go about getting your volunteer pool for, for the elections?
Can I add to that, too, to say? I, I want to tell you, I'll be a little chatty, so I'm watching the clock myself. But that's how it's been to this point. Now, have given the opportunity moving forward, I would have a more aggressive recruitment effort for election inspectors. So I just want to say that I'd probably establish something to reach out more.
Okay. And I think one question. What, what makes you the most qualified? Well, you're the only, you're the only candidate for the position. So, so why, why should you be selected for the job?
You know, coming into this, I was concerned about competition having not only more experience in elections. The legislative side, public policy side, I've been doing that forever. Elections is a little more sporadic, but I was concerned about people having more experience and having certifications and all these things that I don't have. But I feel like those are things that I can always learn. I think my experience, the fact that I am here, that I have worked with the city, I'm familiar with most of the players here, the administration, the election staff, election inspectors, election workers. I think that gives me a little bit of a heads up, hit the ground running, because I know the issues. You know, I, I know Michigan election laws. I've been learning a lot more about that, but Open Meetings Act, everything to do with public policy, all the things that we work with in council, you know, I know it like the back of my hand, so.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue.
All righty. Our next council member to go is Ms. Worthing from the ninth ward.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue, I've worked with you for the last five years, and you are very bright, and you know, like you said, the legislative side, you've got that covered for sure. You're soft spoken, but that doesn't mean that you don't know what you're doing. You, you get things done, and you're very motivated, so I'm very happy to see you here today. Do you think that the city clerk works for council? Or that the city clerk is in charge of the council?
I believe that the council appoints the city clerk, and that's pretty much the extent of that, sort of. There's a lot of appointees that serve at the pleasure of, the clerk does not serve at the pleasure of the council. The clerk is appointed by the council. The clerk serves the pleasure of the law, election law, Secretary of State, State of Michigan, Bureau of Elections, and residents. I believe that the clerk can guide the council when it comes to council's rules, Robert's rules, but I would never say, you know, like a parliamentarian, so to speak, this is it and what it is. I would just point out things to the council. The same goes for the, the council to the clerk, because councils elected officials. I don't really believe that council should have any say over what the clerk does for that very reason. So our charter, the language, you have to really pay attention to it, but the council appoints the clerk, and that's the extent of that. I like to think of it as a cooperative working relationship to, it means to an end, so the records, the meetings, the management of meetings, acting as a clerk to the council.
What do you need to make elections go smoothly? Is there anything that you learned in this last, I know it's your first time in charge, but is there anything that you learned that could help you do your job effectively for the next election?
My favorite, one of my favorite things, standard operating procedures. It's very frustrating working, and it has been for many years, in different departments. When you come in and you're told something, and, but there's nothing in writing, this is, this is what it is. And because of the, the work of the clerk is mandated by so many different laws and procedures and rules, there's no guessing, there's no halfway, a lot of, there's a lot of musts and shalls. So I think to establish procedures for not only the operations of different aspects of elections, the offices, the staff, that would be my goal, so that if somebody leaves, we're not all like, what, what do we do next? There's always a backup. So I don't know if that answered your question, but yes, that would be one of my goals to just, and support for me with the council, elections are on everybody's mind right now. It's very important, and I kind of, I don't want to say the tension is not always negative, but I'm glad that people are paying more attention to elections and how they work and things like that. But I want them to do it without thinking something's wrong, to just realize that this is how it is, to educate people more. But to that end, I would hope that the council would support a budget, whatever is needed. When I started in the council office, the, the minutes, the permanent records and things were behind by 10 years because they were understaffed. We've been understaffed ever since, so we never caught that up. Council has meetings, and especially when we were during COVID and doing electronic meetings, we had two or three meetings a week. It's hard for one or two people to not only do agendas, minutes, the follow-up, and then here's another meeting. So I would hope that the council would support any type of financial things that were needed to maintain not only the clerk's office, but the council office as well. So that would be my answer to that. And again, I hope I answered your question.
No, you did, thank you. I, I know it was your first time running it, and I didn't hear anything negative out and about, if there was, I didn't hear it myself. So I think it went really smoothly, and I know you were working hard. And I think the procedures is an absolute must. I absolutely agree with you. We need to have that in place. Every place of employment has, like, a manual or procedures to follow, so, thank you.
Thank you. Our next council member to interview the clerk is the council member from the first ward, Mr. Mays. Mr. Mays?
Did you say Mays?
Yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon, good evening, Ms. Donahue. I don't know if I agree that we should be doing this prior to public speaking, but we're doing it, Mr. Lewis. I was, oh, I'm always curious to hear what the public say first, and then we get into business, and that's really the pattern. You know our council rules somewhat, correct, Ms. Donahue?
That's correct.
And the agenda is laid out in our council rules, how it should go. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
That is a fair statement. And so I don't know, I know how agendas are made. I've served as president, vice president, finance chair. Whoever's chairing those meetings and/or committees, y'all work with them on the agenda, correct?
To a certain degree.
And if they're there alone with you working on an agenda, how do you advise them or communicate with them to follow the council rules? Do you do any of that, or have you had to do any of that?
Yes, it just depends. I will say with every president, there's probably a different, every president has a different opinion. And again, as clerk, I will point out what the rules say, I will point out precedents, but I'm not going to fight.
And you'll let them move forward with whatever they want to do?
Whatever they want, but I'll say this is.
I understand. How long have you been serving as deputy clerk? When did you get that position?
October 2019.
October of what year?
2019.
2019. So you've been deputy clerk since October 2019. Prior to deputy clerk, you worked with the council and worked in this area for how long?
I started with council in 2006.
2006?
Yes, and I did have some separation.
Yeah, you went to another area and then came back.
Right.
So probably you've been working with the council for years.
Yes.
That's a fair statement. And you've just finished serving as clerk in an interim position during your first election. How did it go in your opinion?
I, I think it went well. My goal in accepting the interim position, because it was so close to election and it was unexpected, I've, I, you know, since I've been working with the council, I've always had the idea. I've, you know, since I've been working with the council, I've always had ideas about ways that things could be done differently.
There was some particulars, but the election was certified, correct?
Correct.
Are you proud of how it went for you in your first election?
That's a tricky question, yes.
Beg your pardon?
Yes, but I did see a lot of areas that need improvement.
Now, the three divisions of the clerk's office, I call them divisions, would be the election division, fair statement?
Yes.
The council?
Yes.
And licensing?
Yes.
Those are the three main areas that you'll be supervised.
Correct.
Ms. Donahue, you want this position?
I do.
You applied for this position?
Yes.
And you understand there was, I understand, I don't know if it's true, I've never seen it, but 25 applicants, you understood that?
Yes.
And it was narrowed down to two, you understood that?
Yes.
And so now it's down to one, correct?
Correct.
And who would that one be?
That would be me.
That would be you. Ms. Donahue, you understand that the city clerk is a council appointment?
Yes.
And you understand from your history here that the council used to have two appointments, the unbutts person and the clerk?
Correct.
Now it's down to one. And you do understand that if you're given this position, as the council watch and review, the council would have power to keep you, or in some cases, for cause, remove you?
Correct.
And you understand that?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue, do you think you can do a good job?
I do.
You feel confident?
Yes.
You've done the job?
Yes.
And you'll continue to do the job?
Absolutely.
Ms. Donahue, I wish you the best of luck and I support you as the clerk for the City of Flint, based upon my knowledge, my history, and me watching you and working with you. God bless you and God bless the office of the clerk.
Thank you.
Our next council member is council member from the Fourth Ward, Mr. DeBriesley.
Good evening.
Hello.
You know, one of the questions I had during the budget process was digitalizing our records. What would your plan be for those?
Well, as you are all aware, there are hundreds of thousands of pieces of paper in our office, tens of thousands of documents that need to be organized and filed, some that need to be eliminated. And the first thing I would do is an assessment and an audit of what is needed. I would incorporate records retention. We, right now, we have, we utilize a database called Legistar. It's out of date, it gives a lot of issues, but it's what we still use on a regular basis for your minutes and meetings right now in our records. We have been trying to work on to incorporate Granicus, which is another system that we have purchased. But when we were going to start was also when the pandemic came and we had to stop working with that. But that system is like night and day with Legistar because it eliminates a lot of the hard, you know, copy. It's mostly digital and electronic, so I would definitely try to utilize that. I would try to work with, I don't know, interns, part-time people. I would bring in people temporarily, by that I mean months to years, to get everything caught up, to establish a process for the records so that we can move forward so that from the time we get something on an agenda or an, again, standard operating procedures from start to finish, so that we don't have the situation that we have right now, which is a lot of storage and a lot of records that should be digitized.
Okay, the other question I had, let me, I haven't written my phone. Okay, as you know, Lynda Polley has a settlement with the city in regards to charter compliance. How will you follow up to make sure that we stay in compliance with the charter and get into compliance where we are not? What are your plans? How do you think that you as clerk could do that?
As clerk, I believe that I would have, instead of just making suggestions, I could, you know, assign people to do certain things. The settlement, I know it's, it hasn't been, I won't say honored. It's one of those things that was not made a priority, it's gotten behind, but it's absolutely something. I have it on my list of five-year goals to, because the charter is so detailed and a lot of what's in it is, it happens on a calendar. It might be an annual thing or something like that, to just have processes in place so that we don't forget or we're not behind on things, again, that we have the staff to do the things that are legally required. But yeah, to literally, I have the charter compliance documents right here because it's been important, it's been on my mind. If the election was number one, I had put it on the back burner, but the codification is something that's important to me because it's something that I've worked on through the years. So yeah, to immediately do an assessment with the legal department to see where we are as far as that compliance goes, to see what we still need to do and to make that a priority and go from there.
Okay, I know one issue that is near and dear to Mr. Murphy's heart is the Revenue Estimation Commission. And I know that a year ago, we voted to establish that, to have that. We as a council have not done anything. How as a clerk, will you push us to do that?
It's interesting that you mention that. That's one of those things where you hear things. I've heard that there's just, because if I'm not mistaken, those commissioners have certain requirements. They have to have accounting, this and that. And my understanding is there's nobody that's applied or that wants to be a part of that commission. But as the clerk, sorry, I would make an effort to, again, to as much as possible, to recruit, to try to find somebody to fit that, if not, to work with legal, to make charter amendments through councils that would address some of those concerns so that that Revenue Estimation Commission could be appointed and operate in the way that it's expected. And I'm sorry for going over.
Thank you.
Our next member is Mr. Murphy from the Third Ward.
Thank you, thank you. Let me, first of all, congratulations for making it this far. One of the things that I just want to make known, to ask you, to see if you're clear with this. In section 3-401, the city clerk appointment intended, the clerk shall be eligible for reappointment at the end of each term. The vote to the appointment and the vote to discharge the city clerk shall be not subject to review by the mayor. The city clerk is a five-year term. Are you aware of this?
Yes.
Are you also aware of how we got where we're at today?
What do you mean?
What I mean is when we approved the charter, the city clerk was grandfathered in. The five years is in January, January the first will been the fifth year for a former clerk to have been there five years and some. So are you clear of how we got to this process?
Yes.
Thank you. There has been some alleged things that went on with this past election. I did not hear good things about this election. Quite frankly, I was one of the ones waiting to look at the election results. I did reach out to you early the next day morning, we had a conversation. I was concerned immediately on what is going on with the election. Why is our election taking so long to be counted? You're looking on TV, 11 o'clock, they posting up election results. Then the City of Flint, the next morning, there was no results. Then later on, the results eventually came in. We can't have that. Then there was some alleged polls where workers wasn't signing off on things. I watched our video and it was disturbing, some of the things that I saw. I'm not sure that I agree that this election went okay. It's very concerning. It's not only concerning to me, it's concerning to so many of us. We got a presidential election coming up. I'm concerned and I don't believe that I'm just the only one concerned. There are many of us concerned that something is not right in the elections department. Do you plan on doing something different if you get this position moving forward? Because there are some great concerns. And if I had to spend my time with this interview, dealing with the election and having dialogue with you, with election, that's what I would prefer to do, but I have some other questions, so I want to, I only have five minutes. Do you, what would you do different to make so many of us that feel like the election had a lot of flaws in it? I'm not sure where we're at with this, but the election has some issues and there are so many of us. And I am the voice of so many people now because I get to use this platform to talk about it. So I want to take my time to ask you, what happened?
Okay, I just want you to know I have about 30 seconds to respond. So I won't be able to tell you everything that I would want to say to that because I have a lot to say to that. What I will say is that every concern that you and everyone else has will be addressed. As interim, again, I didn't want to do, I could have ideas and want to do a lot of things, but I have to follow the law. And as interim, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go over. I wouldn't want to establish rules or policies that another clerk might come in and do something different. But believe me, it's part of the education too for the public. Do you want me to stop talking? Because I will. It's important to me that the public is educated because a lot of times people see these things and they don't realize that. Okay, first of all, Flint is the largest municipality in the county. We have more precincts, we have more voters, so our stuff is always going to come later because it just takes us longer. No precincts balance, every precinct doesn't always balance all the time. If we can explain why they're out of balance, then it's, but what I saw was just a lot of paperwork and remarks and follow-ups that wasn't done like it should have been done. So yes, all of that will be addressed.
Thank you, and there will be a second round for two minutes too. And then our Dr. Lewis.
All right, thank you. So Ms. Donahue, I heard you mention that the public has to be educated. So can you provide an example of a successful project or initiative that you have spearheaded during your time in city administration? And this could also speak to you educating the public. So can you provide examples of successful projects or initiatives that you spearheaded during your time in city administration?
Well, that's kind of a tricky one. I have a lot of, most of what I do is, it's internal and autonomous, it's to the job that I would do. So I don't know that anybody would know anything about, you know, me establishing my own standard operating procedures or working with, actually, Ms. Johnson and I, we kind of, if there's something that doesn't affect the rules or the broader picture, we internally do things to affect how our jobs can be improved. You know, as far as educating the public, that's part of what I was talking about a minute ago. It's just breaking down some of those, these bigger ideas to smaller concepts so that people don't think that there's all this sneakiness and fraud and things going on so that they understand the laws in more of a layman's way. One of the main things I can think of is just, and I don't, it wasn't that I made any change, but the 2020 presidential election, I kind of ended up doing the payroll by default. And there was a lot of things that I was told this is how we do it, it just didn't work for me. And if I couldn't, if nobody could explain to me that there was a law that was being followed or I couldn't follow it, then I kind of made changes just for that election. They weren't changes that were kept or anything like that, but it made it more efficient for me because I think that was our largest election to date and there were over almost 600 election inspectors that I had to do the payroll for. And probably 400 of those were new at that time. So I had to do all the application and input, and these are things that became an issue this year that we were being part of a lawsuit to follow up. So I think just being able to have that up. Now, that was me. It didn't affect the greater outcome of anything, like I said, having that autonomy to just do things and seeing what's better. Well, now, in a position of authority, I can say, well, this worked for me two years ago, this is what I think we should do forever moving forward. So again, I probably am all over the place with my question. I don't know if I answered your question, but that's where I'm gonna put that there, so.
I came across like a cheat sheet put out by you while you were interim clerk. And it was talking about the things that constituents must know during an election. Are you familiar with this?
Yes.
Okay, so I know that you do so much that you probably forgot about that cheat sheet. So, and that was, and to me, that was major because it addressed a lot of people's questions. So I'm going to toss that back in your lap. So can you tell us about that, what you have spearheaded in order to inform the constituents about things that they must know about the current election?
I am a bibliophile. I love research, I love words. But to me, when you have something like this, and especially in legal language, it's too much. So to take something in bullet point or checklist, it's, you know, it's something I can do for a lot of different aspects of things. So yes, one of the things, voter registration was a big thing. And I did participate in a town hall meeting with the Secretary of State. And I didn't want to give any misinformation. So for me, it's like to have a cheat sheet for myself kind of thing, and I'll just take all that and let me break it down, just hit me with the stuff that matters. So the election law is huge, there's so many different aspects, absentee ballots, applications, all these things. And to have something, not only for the residents, but for the person answering the phone, to me, it's just more effective and efficient than saying, well, here, here you go, here's the law and find what you need. So, so yeah, I'd probably create hundreds of those if given the opportunity for all the different aspects of elections.
That was perfect timing. So then I will go last and then we'll go into our second round, which again is for two minutes. We've talked a lot tonight about elections along with the multiple responsibilities of the city clerk. Can you share your process for managing? Can you share your process for managing competing priorities? When we know that we have council elections, multiple member bodies, what have you? Can you share how you, how you manage these competing priorities?
It's always, for me, it's going to, I'm going to defer to what the law says. Most of the things that, that the clerk is responsible for have deadlines. They have dates that they have to be done by. So that's pretty much how I operate is what takes precedence, especially in the election. Election supervisors get a calendar that basically tells you on this date, you have to do this by this date, this date, and this date. Council obviously has a continuous priority. But elections, to me, the supervision of elections and making sure that the residents are able to have an election is number one. So yeah, it's just prioritizing based on calendars and deadlines that are mandated by law. Open Meetings Act, however anything falls.
Thank you. You've, you've mentioned processes and standard operating procedures a lot this evening, which, which I personally appreciate. Can you share how you will work to incorporate these systems to help streamline city of Flint processes?
I think, again, my priority would probably be elections. Right now, I believe we don't have any elections scheduled for 2023. So I would, as of right now, I would definitely take advantage of that time to, now, I don't want to say retrain, but just to help people to refocus on priorities and what the objectives are as far as the law, the election laws, and what we're responsible for. And just kind of work my way backwards to see what we already have in place right now with the election as interim. When I spoke to the election workers and I said, I'm not trying to train anything, but what I expected for them was for them to let me know as clerk what it is. Like each of them have different roles in elections. I expected them to let me know what my part was that I needed to do. So that's moving forward, that would be kind of part of it, working backwards. Again, to see something as simple as the time sheet for elections, like it's horrible in my opinion. It doesn't really say what needs to be said. Can I change it? Is there a law? I don't know, but I would find out. So I would just jump right in and, and try to prioritize things as far as what the law requires. And then break that down to establish procedures for all the different aspects, especially the things that, that I worked with or came into contact with or that became a part of what I just did for this election and what I already know for the public policy and council work.
Thank you, that's a nice segue into my final question. If you are selected for this position, what would you like to do? What would your goals be for the first 90 days as city clerk?
First 90 days? I'm not even going to look at my sheet. The first 90 days would be the codification of the code, which has been put on the back burner a little bit because of the circumstances. The budget is coming up, so I would have to start working on the upcoming budget. But I would do an audit and maybe readjust what we already have in place now. One of my other priorities would be elections and council staffing to address the people that we have now and need for any additional worker. That's really in deference also to contracts, unions and things like that. But I personally believe that some of the jobs need to be restructured to reflect what we're doing now as opposed to what we did 20, 25 years ago when these job descriptions were created. That would be our priority. The literal sorting of the documents and clearing out some of the stuff that we have. So yeah, that would be, I don't know if that's too much for 90 days, but that would definitely be some of my priorities.
Awesome, thank you very much. I think that was right on the buzzer. Yep, okay. All right. So now we will go into the second round. As a reminder, for any follow-up questions, we'll again be random draw. Each council member has two minutes, including the response. And our first person for a follow-up is Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Donahue, I would just like to, I wanted to piggyback off of something that Councilwoman Lewis brought up, and that was more or less the education of the community in regards to, to the voting procedures. And I looked at the results of the election. And I, I thought that we had a lot of, I don't know what you call it, spoiled, is it spoiled ballots or whatever? So that said to me that we really need to be about the business of educating the residents on how to, to vote, particularly when it comes to the absentee ballots. Because I mean, you know, you really got to read those instructions. That's hard. I did absentee ballot one time and I said, no, I'd rather go into pause and vote. Because you know, you got to make sure you seal the envelope. You got to do this and do that. And it's kind of hard. I think I, you know, I almost messed up the envelope. But, okay, you know, I work with the adult population, adult education population. I help individuals get their GEDs and we work with adult basic education, okay? And you know, we have a very, very high percentage of, a very, very high low literacy rate here in the city. So it is hard for people to understand the directions. What are we going to do? And I guess my time is up, but keep that in mind. Keep that in mind.
Point of order. What is the timeframe that's been given to each council person? What is it, two minutes or three minutes?
For the second round, it is two minutes.
And it was how many minutes in the first round?
Five.
Yeah, I think two minutes is a little too short.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mays. All righty. Our next, for the follow-up, Ms. Worthing.
I will yield my time to hear your answer to Ms. Winfrey Carter's question.
Okay.
Point of information, Madam Chair, is it a third round?
No, sir.
And so we ain't going one minute in the third round?
No, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, I think that's an interesting point that you made because one of the things that I found people reaching out and Ms. Sheila Fullmore from the National Federation from the Blind reached out to me during the election time because she was concerned about the voter assist terminals. And those are the terminals that are in every precinct that are utilized by people with disabilities. And she was frustrated because the worker didn't know how to use the machine. So she couldn't vote before because they couldn't show her how to use the machine. And I, and it was frustrating for me because we assume that people just know these things. So, you know, it was important to me to have a, a meeting with those individuals to help and show them that. So the same concept, you know, taking, I don't know too, with the absentee ballots. Like you said, if we can break it down and make it simpler. But to me, there's always a way to make something, to try to checkpoint or make something simpler. You know, to have some kind of assistance or someone that can, on staff, that can help people if they're willing to reach out for that assistance. So this is just another on the list of things that need to be addressed, ideas that are outside of the box. And I would definitely want to do something like that. So thanks for bringing it up and putting it on the list, possibilities.
Thank you. Are you done? Okay. I got two coming out, this one's in my hand. Ms. Priestley. Oh, sorry.
One of the problems we have with elections is the lack of Republicans at the polls. It should be equal Republicans as well as Democrats. What is your solution to get that to be more equal than what it has been in the past?
Well, that's, that was also another interesting thing to learn because the law, when it says words like shall and must, and that's one of those laws that says, you know, the election commission shall appoint. And I understand that the city is mostly Democrat. And I understand that, again, to me, election inspectors are basically volunteers, even though they're paid. So we can want something, but you know, we only have as many as we have. But I would actively recruit. Interestingly enough, during that time, a lot of Republican individuals just would call the office and say, hey, I'm a Republican if you need help. You know, because I heard about the lawsuit. We get lists from the Republican Party to just, to vet those individuals. And to then, you know, you know more individuals, to just actively recruit so that we have at least one Republican and one Democrat. We have to have at least three individuals at every precinct during elections. So to try to make sure that we have a Democrat and Republican at every precinct would be a goal. And if that means, you know, to actively recruit, then that's what I, you know, that would be my plan because I don't want to end up with another lawsuit because of something that, to me, can be addressed in that way actively.
Mr. Mays, you got two minutes for follow-up?
I would say this. I watched for years the process of selecting a clerk. I haven't seen such rigorous or confined interview processes. And this one have been. And I don't know who planned it or what's going on, but you know, I hear a lot of talk about elections. But in the past election, when Ms. Brown was still here, in this one that you was involved in, I looked at Gleason. He can't even run for office no more because of a marriage license. But what he did using his office to help Mr. Neely campaign, in my opinion, was a violation. I could ask your opinion of people using their office illegally to campaign. And I know that Ms. Brown had sent something to the police department when Ronald James got prosecuted as it relates to absentee ballots. And I know for a fact in this election that were people illegally paying folks to do absentee ballot activity. It's illegal, I know this. I also understand that people can still file protests after certification on these issues and others. We'll see what happens. But I'm not going to ask you all the nuances of law and court cases and what people can and can't do in elections. I looked at the Republicans in the polling place. I know this is a strong Democratic area. But in two minutes and two rounds, you know, I'm the type that I'm ready to put the motion on the floor to see who will approve you or not. But with this particular council and with the stringentness of it and with the breaking of the quarms and people getting up and leaving, I don't want to waste nobody's time. You're the last person standing. At this point, I would make a motion in order to approve you as city clerk when anybody who have further questions and interviews be able to do that in the two five-minute rounds. And so I so moved.
Okay, that, that motion will not be in order at this time. We're going to finish this out.
Point of order.
What's your point?
I've just made the motion, I had the floor.
Yes, and as I said, that motion is not in order. We're going to continue on. What is your point?
I just reviewed a tape last night where Ms. Worthing made a motion to censor me for 30 days under the old council. We in court.
Okay, Mr. Mays.
Point of order.
Mr. Mays, I've ruled on your point of order. We're going to continue on with the process. Mr. Murphy has the floor.
Point of order.
What is your point?
So your ruling is that no motion can be made by a council member in this meeting?
My motion, my ruling is that at this time, because we are in the purpose of the meeting, which is the interview for the clerk, that motion is not in order.
So let me ask you this question.
Mr. Mays, I was not finished. If you would like to make that motion after the interview, that will be valid, but at this time it is not.
Okay, well, I'll make it after the interview if we got a quorum. But I disagree with you, I'm just not going to appeal you.
Okay, Mr. Mays.
And so you say after the interview, in between this and public speaking, a motion is proper?
Mr. Mays, we're going to continue on with the interview process.
Point of order.
Please let me finish, please let me finish. We're going to continue on with the interview process. We have one, two, three, four colleagues left. If there would, if there is the request for a motion, whatever that motion may be, after the interview process is over, we will entertain that motion. But at this time, Mr. Murphy has the floor for his two rounds.
So when you get to the last round and the last person, you'll call on me to make a motion?
Okay, Mr. Murphy has the floor.
Thank you very much. The city clerk shall provide training in municipal government and the acted provisions of the charter to all newly elected city officials. And, but I want to go a little further with the training. The poll workers with the adequate training, could you speak on that? What is your, if elected, appointed by the council, what is your plan of action for giving the proper training to election workers and also the proper training to us as elected officials? Such as, one thing we did with the charter, we went to mock college and we had a little workshop with the city council so that they can understand the charter. We went to Lansing to some municipal government training. So what is your plans on giving adequate training to the election workers so that they could be able to read what they need to do and sign off on what they need to sign off on when it comes down to, after the polls close or during the election process far as making sure that they are signing the necessary documentation so that when they go over to the county where the board of canvassers have to certify this election, they don't be scrambling trying to figure out, well, why this piece of paper ain't signed? And why this piece of, because it seemed like that was one of the issues. What, what are your plan of actions for that?
Again, looking at all of the training that's taken place, I didn't, when I started as interim, you know, I wanted to go to all the different training sessions so I could get an idea about, I've been in them, being trained to work an election. But because of everything else going on with lawsuits and everything else, I just didn't have time. But absolutely, I would look at all of the training material that's being done. To me, I want to recommit, I want the workers to recommit because I think, this is just my opinion, I think some of them have worked for so long and they've done the same things every election, they work the same precinct, they, they get used to doing the same things. And then once election day is over, they have no responsibility or obligation, they get a paycheck. But I'm, I would do it differently. You know, we're, again, retrain, but you are going to sign off on, and then if the board of canvassers calls about your precinct, you're going to go over to the board of canvassers and you're going to explain all the mistakes. And then you get paid after. It's, that's when you get your check after everything is because you're getting paid to provide a service. If you're, everything you do is wrong.
Your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dr. Lewis?
So Ms. Donahue, what challenges do you see the city facing over the next few years? And how do you think the city clerk can help address them? Yeah, what challenges do you see the city facing over the next few years? And how do you think the city clerk can help address them? And how do you think the city clerk can help address them?
The city broad in general, you mean just any issues that the city might be facing? Or with, in particular?
I'll say related to the clerk's office.
Um, I believe that the presidential election is gonna have a lot of attention. You know, we're gonna have a lot of challengers. We're gonna have a lot of, um, attention. So, to have all these things put in place to, so by the time that 2024 rolls around, that there's no question about what is expected, what we're doing, that the, what we turn into the county. I can't tell you how many times that I hear them say, well, this is Flint always, Flint's always like this. I don't want to hear that anymore. I wanna, you know, tell me all the problems. That's great. But what solutions can you offer? So, to just make sure that, um, we are accountable to the residents, to the law, that our workers are trained and educated so that not just on what it is that you do, chairpersons in the precincts are expected to know a little bit about a lot. But I want, you know, just because you're the person that usually does the application to vote, you should still be able to jump in in other places. And also, to just, um, to have things be accessible and easily accessible. The, the computer programmers talking about Granicus makes it so that the minutes, the records, everything you vote on, approve, your videos, everything is in one place. So, I think if people are educated and the clerk can help in so many different ways to provide that information, not just for elections, but a lot of what's going on in the city, to provide accurate information so that people know what's going on.
Thank you. And then, Ms. Burns for our final? Well, and then me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mine is gonna be real brief because, Ms. Donahue, because you have always had an open-door policy, answered emails, phone calls, and so on. And I appreciate that. And I hope that you'll continue to do that. You are the sole person, once we vote, to keep that open-door policy and transparency. You will be the official record keeper of the city of Flint. And I know you are tasked with a huge task to bring everything into the, uh, new century. So, and that's, that's a lot of work, not only for the city clerk's office, well, for the, for the city clerk's office and for the counseling office. And you have a lot to do. One of the things that I, I had spoke to you before the election was protecting the integrity of the elections. And that is something that's going, it, it's important. And I did watch, um, the live videos and I was troubled and I was concerned. So, I hope that you and your staff are watching those also to make sure that internal controls and issues that we had, because we have five, I believe, six canisters cannot be opened to say what happened. And precinct 55 had, I would say catastrophic failures. And so, to make sure we're coming up for our next election, you know, that we're better prepared. I don't know if we're done with this one so far because when you, you look at that video and then I watched in Lansing, and we had people who did not sign off on the election to certify it at the county, well, at the city too, I believe. So, that I'm concerned about. And I think your job was made much more difficult when asking staff to come over. When it's an election, it should be all hands on deck to make sure we're handling it professionally, timely, and transparent. I was disappointed to see that the call had to be made for the prosecutor. But, um, I'm gonna wrap up, Madam Chair. Thank you. You're our sole person. I didn't have a lot of questions because I talked to you. And please keep the open-door policy. Once, uh, we vote upon this, you are my pick. I think you're great. I'd love to see all of your new, um, your new guidelines and procedures and internal controls for our elections implemented. Thank you, Madam Chair, for indulging me.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Donahue, for, for joining us this evening. Thank you for serving the city and thank you for applying. My final question is to allow you, well, it's not even a question. I want to give you the opportunity to share with us anything else that you think would be pertinent or relevant to the reason why you, you believe that you are the best fit for this position, which I do believe up here many of us agree.
Well, again, um, I think most of it's iterated in my resume. I, you know, I believe, um, that this job has a great degree of, well, how about I just, I really want to say what my five-year goals and objectives are. So, if I can just share those with you, um, quickly. And that is to, for all the clerks departments and divisions to audit the budget, make adjustments if needed, charter compliance maintained up to and including established settlement agreement. For the council office, establishing standard operating procedures for all staffing positions and operations, utilizing Granicus, which is a digital civic engagement database for agenda and meeting management, digital forms and services, record management boards, and commission management, resident engagement information, to utilize our current database, Ledgerstar, by transferring, updating, and archiving records and information. Again, to make adjustments and audit, and audit our budget, to have appropriate staffing levels for the legal requirements of the council office, which is very important, to help establish intra-office procedures for councils with regard to its inner workings. Technical support for council to include shared drives, laptops, docu-stations, general training. And I will stop there.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Ms. Donahue. We, we appreciate your service and thank you very much for coming.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mase.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Davina Donahue as the city clerk for the city of Flint.
All right, there is a motion on the floor, and I do believe there is actually a pre-developed language for a resolution to support that, to appoint Davina Donahue to the city clerk for the city of Flint.
Point of information.
Is there a second? Yes, sir.
Second. You say there has been language of resolution drawn up?
Yeah.
Can we see that? And I might include it in the motion before you ask for a second.
Point of information.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I do have to leave the meeting. I did state earlier for.
That is true.
I do have to leave.
Okay, so one, two, three.
You've already seen it.
No, but I have, I have a meeting in my ward.
Thank, yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. So, one, two.
You say you got a lead of me?
Point, point of order, Madam Chair. I too have a, a meeting to attend to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Let me amend the motion, um, if we may. I wanna, this is the same thing, Janelle, two of the same thing. I got two. It's the same.
They should be then, yeah, they must be stuck together.
Okay, let me do it this way. Janelle can help if we have to do a resolution number. But resolution appointing Davina Donahue as city clerk. Section 3-401 of the Flint City Charter states, "The city council shall appoint a city clerk who shall serve a term of five years." The current city clerk term ends on December 31st, 2022. And in anticipation of the need to appoint a new city clerk, the city council requested that applicants be solicited from candidates interested in serving as the city clerk for the city of Flint for the term beginning on January 1st, 2023. It is resolved that the Flint City Council appoints Davina Donahue to serve as city clerk for a five-year term beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending on December 31st, 2027, and that the appropriate city officials do all things necessary to effect this appointment. Is it fair to say that her appointment as interim is lasting until December 31st? And then, the next day, she would become permanent? Well, I would move the approval of this resolution as worded, appointing Davina Donahue as city clerk that I just read into the record, and I so moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. It has been moved and properly supported. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Clerk, I mean, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Through you to Ms. Janelle Johnson, do we need a resolution number on this right now?
No, sir. I'll put it on later.
For this particular meeting, we don't need a resolution number.
No, it's just add-on number one.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Attorney Kim, is it something you want to say?
I was gonna answer the question that you'd asked, but you were correct that her, her appointment as interim clerk ends on December 31st, so this would take effect on January 1st. There would be continuity of.
Through, through you to Ms. Donahue, you receiving the clerk's pay now?
Yes.
And your interim appointment is effective to December 31st?
Yes.
And then, the next day would be January 1st? And that's how you worded this resolution? I'm satisfied with that. That'll be all in my first round.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the first round?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. If you get the votes tonight, um, your position as deputy clerk will come open. I will hope that, that, um, position get filled as soon as possible. And I will hope that, um, this council and this body do whatever we can to support the Department of the Clerk to recruit and retrain the poll workers and the employees that work in your department or add some new ones, get rid of some. I'm not sure what it looks like. But we got some problems. And I'm not comfortable with the next election if what we just seen in November, um, is the status quo. Will we consider okay? It's not okay with me, for, just for the record. But I'm willing to do whatever I can as a council to support your department if you will get the votes tonight. But I want to see those workers that work the poll get trained or don't have a job and bring on some new people because it makes no sense for them to get paid to jack some stuff up. And we have the issues that we have going on when it come down to certify an election. That should not be tolerated. And I hope and pray that you do all things necessary, as we always seems to say, to, um, retrain those workers and let them know we, some of us is just not, some of the public is not satisfied with what went down with this election in November. And Lord knows, we can't have this in this presidential election. We want to make sure that we doing things right. And I know you only had a short window of time, so I don't fault you. This probably been going on, probably, probably predated prior to you when they done got comfortable in their position. So, I will, I want you to uncomfortable them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion in the first round? Go ahead.
Thank you. So, Ms. Donahue, I am definitely aware that you were thrust into the interim clerk position. And I'm also aware that you, uh, you've been in this capacity as clerk, I say for a short period of time. You have made monumental strides in the office. I've seen a lot of things began to become caught up. I've seen, um, a new sense of morale. And definitely, I see just a new vision, um, just going forth the city. So, not saying, um, you know, anything towards the old guard, but we must, we must remain steadfast on improving. Stop doing things in antiquated way. And I appreciate that about you and your leadership and your vision. So, I'm definitely in favor of moving forward with you, um, as clerk because, again, your work precedes itself. So, thank you for your service and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the first round? Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
Yes, um, Madam President, thank you. Ms. Donahue, um, I have, um, this is my second term on council. And, um, you welcomed me in the first, um, first day of council. And you've been, um, very professional. You've been diligent. If I have any questions, all I know is I can call you and you're right, right there to answer whatever I need. I support you for this position 100%. I know that you.
I support you for this position 100%. I know that you.
Consider okay. It's not okay with me, just for the record. But I'm willing to do whatever I can as a council to support your department if you get the votes tonight. But I want to see those workers that work the poll get trained or don't have a job and bring on some new people because it makes no sense for them to get paid to jack some stuff up and we have the issues that we have going on when it come down to certify an election. That should not be tolerated. And I hope and pray that you do all things necessary, as we always seems to say, to retrain those workers and let them know, some of us is just not, some of the public is not satisfied with what went down with this election in November. And Lord knows, we can't have this in this presidential election. We want to make sure that we doing things right. And I know you only had a short window of time, so I don't fault you. This probably been going on, probably predated prior to you and they done got comfortable in their position. So I want you to uncomfortable them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion in the first round? Go ahead.
Thank you. So Ms. Downe Hugh, I am definitely aware that you were thrust into the interim clerk position. And I'm also aware that you've been in this capacity as clerk, I said for a short period of time. You have made monumental strides in the office. I've seen a lot of things began to become caught up. I've seen a new sense of morale and definitely I see just a new vision just going forth the city. So not saying, you know, anything towards the old guard, but we must, we must remain steadfast on improving. Stop doing things in antiquated way. And I appreciate that about you and your leadership and your vision. So I'm definitely in favor of moving forward with you as clerk because again, your work precedes itself. So thank you for your service and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the first round? Go ahead, Ms. Murphy.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. Ms. Downe Hugh, I have, this is my second term on council and you welcomed me in the first day of council and you've been very professional. You've been diligent. If I have any questions, all I know is I can call you and you're right, right there to answer whatever I need. I support you for this position 100%. I know that you.
You will go right into the position with your arms sleeves up and ready to dig in and do that whole list of work that you stated on the record. So I look forward to working with you. Patience. I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Hearing multiple, I was looking at Ms. Priestley. So I'll go Ms. Priestley and then Ms. Worthing. Hearing multiple, I was looking at Ms. Priestley. So I'll go Ms. Priestley and then Ms. Worthing.
Paul, I know you didn't call me.
It was not Paul.
Or an order.
It was not Paul. Okay, but we do need that you didn't. Yeah, but I need to know. Know. Alrighty, Paul, you ready? It is 7:18 on December the 5th. We are back from our recess. On the agenda, that brings us down to public speaking. Ms. Johnson, who was our first public speaker?
Our first public speaker is R.L. Mitchell.
Press the button.
Hello, Council. I'm R.L. Mitchell. I live at 759 East Linnan Street. On the behalf of, for the record, I'm one of the last candidates of Ms. Inez Brown by using her shells and muss and swoosies, whatever that foreign word is, because, because I lived over there on 3512 Milton Street in Pasadena, and that's where the buck stopped right there and started from going downtown way from Burson Fieldhouse. It don't go no farther down on Palast Street and Beringo Street for the black peoples. But I say that to say this because she moved me out of my house just in time because the black mold was taking over. Inez put me in another house that's up, and by doing that, I want you to know for the record, I found the check in my mailbox. It was Weston House something, and they say I was a candidate and I've got, I got the check. But he asked me if I want camber and, camber and press, but I told, I sent Inez. And that's why Davina is the right person for this because she know, because she put her own rules in like Ms. Lewis said. She's capable of doing that since that five years Mr. Murphy did with the manager takeover, tried to put a monkey wrench in there, but it didn't work because she still got, got voted on. And but for the record, I am very pleased how you peoples run this city because they sent me to, I went to get the bank account over to Bank One, and they told me, said, sir, it's a real check, but we don't tell you what happened. These peoples might do something to you, but you got to make a decision on your own to put your, and I decided not to open the bank account because until, until Davina get encompassed, because they want to give me no opportunity. They told me don't speak to them. Anyway, I came, it says certain peoples have heart attacks dealing with this such as such ciseration, Mr. Mitchell, but I just refused to put my bank after they, you know, a Bank One where the police officer used to put their money, they turn it into a Bank One over in the parking lot across the MPA. But anyway, I want the peoples of Flint to know that Inez Brown done a real kindness of, was the last person in the ghetto down there on Pasadena Street. Because that's where all them millions of dollars going to with all, my time's up, but 50 cent everybody donate for the water crisis. And that's it. That's all I'm gonna say. I said too much anyway, right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Michelle Voorhees.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michelle Voorhees, and I live in Thetford Township, Genesee County. I'm a former member of the Genesee County Board of Canvassers, having served in that position for 13 years up until November 2021. The reason I'm standing before you this evening is because you are appointing a new clerk for the city of Flint, and indeed already have done that. The position of clerk is one of authority and great responsibility, and one of the most important duties of the clerk is to oversee and organize elections. As I'm sure you can imagine, running an election is no easy task. It requires a great deal of organization and people's skills. The clerk is responsible for knowing and understanding each and every process pertaining to an election and for training election workers to also know, understand, and follow these processes. Failure to properly administer an election causes chaos and confusion for election workers and results in improperly sealed ballot containers, out of balance poll books, and raises questions about the validity of the votes reported. When election processes are not followed, ballot containers cannot be opened for examination of ballots and other election materials, and precincts cannot be recounted. This is a serious issue and should not be taken lightly by the clerk's office or by this council. Rather than recounting all the various issues or pointing fingers for past mistakes, I am coming instead to implore you to take the reins for the future. The appointment of a new clerk is an opportunity for a new beginning. Election processes can be understood and properly administered. Election workers can be trained and held accountable to do their jobs. The chain of custody for AV ballots can be properly documented, ballot containers can be properly sealed, and poll books can be balanced. I do not have an opinion as to who should be chosen to fill this very important position, although I congratulate Ms. Donahue on her appointment. I think you made a good choice. However, appointing and hiring a clerk is not the end of this council's duties with regards to this position. The council must continue to pay attention and hold the clerk accountable in fulfilling all of their duties. In the business world, if an employee, regardless of the level of their employment, continually falls short of producing positive results, they would eventually be replaced. Running a city is no different, so I'm asking you to please take the responsibility of your oversight seriously and hold the people you place in authority accountable. Since my time here addressing you is limited to three minutes, I'm including my personal contact information in written form along with these remarks, should anyone wish to speak with me further. I'm happy to discuss my experiences, answer questions, or offer advice based on my experience with regards to elections, either publicly or privately any time. I thank you so much for this opportunity to speak to you publicly on this issue. Nothing would make me happier than to hear that the city of Flint turned in a clean set of poll books in a timely fashion after the next election. I wish you all the best of luck in moving forward and onward and upward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Robert Carmack. Robert Carmack?
Am I still up?
Nope. The next speaker is Lois Driscoll. The next speaker is Arthur Woodson.
Arthur Woodson. Ms. Worthing, I don't know what you was watching this election, but just some serious stuff went on in this election. I'm not gonna say that it was cheating and all this other stuff, but I'm gonna say that it was some fraud. Because in Act 116 of 1954, 168.932C, it says nothing should be added, erased, or altered. And if you watch the video, you'll see where they said something was altered. Councilman Murphy, I'm gonna say, not just poll workers, and I'm gonna say a name, Gloria Boone needs to be replaced. I'm saying that. Ms. Donahue, I'm saying that Gloria needs to be replaced. If y'all have to, you ought to pass an ordinance to where no contractor can be over absentee ballot supervisor. Man, being sitting over there at the board of canvassers, everything was smooth. It was the boringest thing in the world. I was going to sleep until they got to Flint books. When they got to Flint books, all hell broke loose. Gloria disrespected the canvassers. They was doing their jobs. Go watch the video. And like I asked the state board of canvassers, Ms. Reeves asked, would she sign off on the things that she were saying to her in remarks? Gloria said, no, I'm not signing off on anything. Why would I, as a certified canvasser, want to certify something that the election director would not even sign off on? That doesn't make sense. The election director said that. So, Ms. Worthing, I suggest that if you haven't heard anything, I think you should listen a little bit more or go watch some videos, because the videos are out there, and it's not what Arthur Woodson is saying, it's not what other people are saying, it's what was said at the canvas. And also you two, Councilwoman Lewis, if you think that this election was ran smoothly, it's no ill towards either one of you, but you really need to watch that video so that it can help us down the road of knowing what went wrong and what needs to be done to make it right. Because it was some serious things that happened. Serious. I mean, one person signing a book. I still want to know if I can sit in the receiving board and watch people coming in, bringing all the change of absentee ballots, canisters, and all other stuff from the precincts. Because what, what you're not hearing, and I could be correct, I mean, I could be corrected. Ninety percent of the absentee ballots wouldn't be able to be counted because it was five out of six books where it was signed, it wasn't signed properly, and the canisters can't be reopened. So if five out of six books can't be open, that, that isn't fair for the candidates who would want to recount. So it's a lot of stuff that needs to be cleaned up and squared away. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Lorraine Thompson. Lorraine Thompson?
Hello.
Yep.
I had some paperwork I wanted to present to you all. Can you hear me? Yeah? No? Okay. I applied and, and am in the process of going through the My Have program. And in that, the lady was explaining to me that Flint was not a partner in getting information to them about the taxes. We're partners with them with the water, on the water accounts, but not with the tax account. So I would like to get this information to you all. I made copies for everybody. How do I, so just walk it to y'all? I also want to congratulate Ms. Davina, she left a month ago, on her appointment. And I didn't have anything particular I wanted to talk about, other than just looking, just talking and listening and, and to people. Wow. It's funny how this situation with the council and people's different points of views. And I know I look at things a little different, and I know I'm getting ready to run out of time, I'm sure. But anyway, how people change depending on, and interact depending on your position. Like, just for instance, my own personal. I only know three of you all. I think I know Mr. Murphy the longest out of everybody that you existed, but we haven't had any real interaction. And most of my conversations and closer interaction is with Ms. Lewis. But how things function here, me and you all are on totally different sides of the table. But that don't change the way I will interact with you all as people. I, I just bumped into Ms. Priestley one time at the Myers, but as far as conversation, I think the most conversation has been with you all. But the changing up of how you dealing with people depending on how they function in this arena is the most ridiculous bunch of mess I've ever come across in my whole entire life. And that's just something to think about. But I do have something personal with Mr. Murphy. When you first came, your biggest pet peeve was this, these meters out here in the front? I'm so sick of the harassment that I feel like I'm taking and, and, and feel like I'm being held hostage by these things every time I come down here. I'm trying, the last time I had a meeting at 2:00 o'clock, I pull in at 2:05. Can I finish? Can I just wrap this up? I pull in at 2:05. I try to put my little money in the machine. It ain't taking my money. I don't have time to call down to the D, whatever he is. I'm sick of it. And I just want to take care of my business. Here, I came to pay my water bill one time, got another ticket, trying to put my money in the thing. I call these people up, and, and since he gave the information on how to get them removed from in the front, they're not removed, they're still sitting there. No action on it. And, and I can't help but to think, because he gave the information, that it's not taking place. And, and I'm really tired as a citizen. Okay, I'm going into something else. Okay, I'll finish.
Thank you. Our, thank you. Our next speaker?
Our last speaker is A.C. Dumas.
My name is A.C. Dumas, and I'm resident of the city of Flint. Couple things I just want to say. First of all, I want to congratulate Mrs. Donahue, and the council for selecting her. I think you did an excellent choice. And, but I don't think that 40 years of bad governance in the clerk's office can happen overnight. I've been here longer than anybody in this room. One person, Papa Wilbur Jared, has attended council meetings longer than me. And it's been going on. It's bad. And this election was notorious. And it was, not because of Ms. Donahue, but it was notorious. And I think if you listen to the former canvasser and take what she was saying, you'll see how notorious it was, and those were all the issues. And so I hope that Ms. Donahue can do the best that she can. Didn't happen overnight. And I told her, don't, don't let these folk bombard you. You had to prioritize and get things right. And one of the board of canvassers told me that this process of getting workers have to really start now for the, for the presidential election, you know, so I agree with that. Also, I want to say that Mrs. Herkenroeder, rules make the game, like a bank makes a river. If you take away the bank, you don't have a river, you'll have a flood. And you are opening up the floodgates, number one. In committee meetings, you can order without objection. In council meeting, you cannot. It takes a roll call vote. And another thing I saw you do, when you were starting to take the names out, you should have had an independent person like the council secretary to pull the names. We don't know if you was looking, had you had a code on the name, we don't know. So you have to be above suspicion. And that's the way it should have been done. But again, I want to congratulate Ms. Donahue and Mr. Woodson, you're right. I was over there at the board of canvassers meeting, and was appalling. I wore my shirt today. My vote, my vote. My vote mattered. And you got a whole bunch of folk vote that didn't matter. You got votes in a canister that'll never be able to count. You had folk that was voting, and they just made You had folk that was voting, and they just made up names and inserted it in the book. All that's happening. And last but not least, if you think it's not bad, the Board of Canvassers voted to send, and I'm wrapping up, to send a complaint to the prosecutor office about fraud. This was a fraudulent election, and a lot of people were hurt, board members were hurt because of this. Thank you.
Sorry, public comment is now closed. That brings us down to council response. Is there any member of the council who wishes to respond to the public?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I've been listening a lot about this election, the Board of Canvassers. I've been to Board of Canvassers meeting with both of the ladies who's sitting there now. That's how long I've been around, the Republican, and it's fair to say the Democrat. I know that these women don't waste their time. One spoke, one is quiet. But we have a duty in governmental operations. We have a duty in the seats that we sit in. This is the second or third election where I've seen problems. And so I'm looking to put the discussion on Governmental Operations Committee, and I would love to have them back. But while they're here now, I've been in meetings that last 10, 11, 12, 1, 2 in the morning. If it's something that we need to dialogue with longer than the three minutes before we adjourn, I'm up for it. I don't know what this majority of the council is up for, but I know, can I ask you, Sharon? These people don't come and sit for nothing. They got other things to do. I've known them for years, both of them. And so I'm gonna see if before we adjourn, we can have a little lightweight dialogue, nothing heavy. Mr. Woodson, I know you had recorded that. Mr. Dumas, rules do matter, and I think we gonna be going from this arena to a court arena. You might very well be a witness with the longevity you've been observing council meetings. But subpoenas have been served. I seen one of them tow up right in front of our face, a court order. And so this council will eventually take rules and procedure very seriously and hopefully be held accountable. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Let's see what happens after this to have a little lightweight dialogue, if they choose. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the council who wishes to?
And Madam Chair, real quick, if I may, Lorraine?
Mr. Mays? Okay. All right. Mr. Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I want to first thank the speakers for coming and speaking. I'm listening, and the election, this past election, is very important. The reason why I say it's very important because you had about 10,000 and some people voted for Karen Weaver, and you had about 11,000 or something voted for Sheldon Neely, and that's a lot of people to vote. And regardless of whoever won or who lost the election, it would concern me if I was running for office, especially as mayor, and there were some issues dealing with the election results, the polls, the precincts, the books. That's concerning, and I think we should take it serious as a council to figure out what went wrong and what should we do, and I'm not sure what that looks like, but we should take that in consideration. The letter that the young lady wrote, Michelle, is that right, Michelle? Nice letter. I'll be rereading the letter. She left no stones unturned. The young lady that spoke on the MYHAP program, thank you for giving me a copy of that. I do believe someone reached out to me that applied for the MYHAP program. I'm not sure whether they got approved, but I think they did go through the process. So I'm gonna be following up with them to see if they did get approved for their MYHAP program. If we don't have that in the city of Flint, because we haven't had a partnership agreement, I would like to do a referral to Ms. Johnson, to all interested parties to see if we are part of the MYHAP program. If we not, we need to apply ASAP. Thank you.
Is there any other member of council who wishes to speak or respond to the public?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Ms. Voorhees, thank you very much for coming. I appreciate that. For years, you've told me about the city of Flint election and how they were run and how many precincts were uncountable, recountable due to improper handling of the canisters. It is a shame that one precinct had an issue, a major legal issue. But the fact is, is that one precinct had that issue, and that needs to be addressed and followed up on, and we will do that absolutely. We will ensure that Ms. Donahue follows that up, and we will follow up with her. And I hope that I never have to hear about it again. For those who don't know, Ms. Voorhees and I have been friends for several years, and so we're gonna do better. We've got our feet under the ground. We have a new clerk. We have responsibility that we're going to take, and thank you very much for your hard work and in presenting this letter to us, because I think it's important for the city as well as ourselves to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of council who wishes to respond to the public? All right, hearing none. We will go ahead and close council response. That brings us down to final council comments and adjournment.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Priestley?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to adjourn. Is there a second?
Support.
It has been moved and properly supported. Roll call, please, Madam, Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Herkenroter?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
I'm abstaining for the reasons that I wanted to hear something real quick from those two Board of Canvassers experienced people, but y'all done voted to adjourn, so for that reason, I'm abstaining.
The vote is five, yes.